All right, the time being six o'clock. Would we all turn our microphones on and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Lost.
Here. Item number three, does anyone have a reason to abstain for either a financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
No.
I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda. I do have one thing we need to remove, and that is the gravel bid on item eight. We do not need to do that. So I would like to remove that from the agenda. Any other items to change or add? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda has been approved. Public comment? Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? There being no public comments, public comment is closed. Moving on to item number five, approval of minutes from February 4th, 2020. Are there any amendments to the amendment?
I'd move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item six, claims.
Just like to point out on page thirty-four for emergency management, there you could see that that's kind of a large amount. But what we did with that is we purchased from the state, oh, I'm pulling it up right here, fifty thousand sandbags at ten cents each. And then we also outfitted, we got a gas-powered sandbag machine now. And so that is why that is a little bit higher right there. But it's within the budget, and I just, if anybody wanted to notice. Talking to Paul, we figured it was a good idea to start preparing for the flood now and hope we don't need it.
I'd ask a question on page three. There's a professional service fee of twelve thousand dollars to our Blake curd. I suppose is that in connection with the murder trial?
For court?
That would be under court.
What's the number?
I think...
Zero one zero one six four seven.
Probably an attorney.
Professional services for court.
Yep.
If we look at the combined court cost, too, it's thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Murder ain't cheap.
No. Well, I mean, when we were doing the budget, we went back and forth over twenty thousand dollars that we could control, and here's thirty thousand that we have very little control over.
Other comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the claims as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Claims are approved. Next item is auditor treasurer report and pooled cash, excuse me.
I'd move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve both the auditor treasurer report and the pooled cash report. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Reports are approved. And National Day of Prayer use agreement.
And that's just a yearly, they have it out by the front door. I mean, I was just given an agreement.
That should just come in, is it into the building and do prayer?
No, it's just out front.
Out front, okay.
Further discussion on the agreement?
I move approval of the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the National Day of Prayer use agreement. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agreement's approved. Item number seven, Twenty-First Century Grant Application.
I can't pull up this application on, do we have a paper copy of this? Because it doesn't pull up on the online package.
Yeah, mine wouldn't either.
Yeah, I can go make a copy. This is what we get, so I'll make some copies.
Do you want me to, I'll just make a copy.
Sure, thank you.
You can go ahead and tell us whatever you would like to share about it.
Sure. Okay. Well, my name is Nicole Beaver, and I'm from the Boys and Girls Club of Yankton. And I'm here today to ask for your support for our grant application for the Twenty-First Century Grant. The Twenty-First Century Grant is a federally funded grant that supports educational programming, like schools, after-school programs like ours at the Boys and Girls Club. And we're seeking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for five years from this grant, which would be significant funding for the club. When we offer a membership at the club, we offer it at a rate of twenty-five dollars for a membership for the year. It actually costs us about seventeen hundred dollars to have a kid at the club for the year. And so we make up a great deal of that difference through our grant applications. Now, the Twenty-First Century Grant has three main focuses or three main goals that they're focusing on for this year. And you'll see two of those goals listed on the form in front of you. The first goal is educational enrichment, which is something that we, is one of our key focuses at the club, that kids who are coming to the club are receiving some sort of educational support or programming. We propose that we use this grant to support a new program here at the club called Club Tutors, which would be an after-school tutoring program. So kids who are falling behind by grade level, we partner with the schools to help identify these kids and help them get that after-school help from Club Tutors to make sure that they are meeting or exceeding grade level. And we've implemented this in other clubs in South Dakota, and every kid that leaves our program is at grade level by the time they leave our program. So we would use the funding to implement that. We would also use the funding to expand our Power Up program, which is our summer program. The learning loss that students experience during the summer is significant, and kids that come to the club have the opportunity to combat that summer learning loss by being able to participate in our Power Up program. There's educational programming. It's focused primarily on STEM. And right now, we are able to offer it to about forty students, but we'd like to expand that in the future to be able to offer it to even more students in the future. So it would also cover that goal. In addition to the educational programming, some of the other opportunities with this grant are other programmings that support students. And one thing that we would like to do would be to implement a transportation program to help those kids have the opportunity to come to the club whose parents maybe work late and don't send their kids to the club because they know they won't be able to make it there by the time we close to pick their kids up. So maybe they send those kids home on the bus after school because they just know that they won't be able to get there. So we'd like to implement a program to help transport kids home at the end of our day instead of at the end of the school day. So they also have that opportunity to benefit from our programming at the club. And we do do supper at the club, so those kids, even if they can't get home, they don't have to go home and make their own supper. They can come to the club and get a good, healthy meal and lots of programming from the club employees. The final part, and that goal is also listed on your sheet, is community engagement. Making sure that the parents are also partners in the educational experience for the kids. And so we are planning on creating additional programming to reach out to parents. We know teachers have the opportunity to have conferences with the parents to help get them involved in their children's education. While at the club, we're looking at creating other programming to help keep parents involved with what we're doing at the club, so they have a real stake in what we're doing at the club. So what we're asking of you here as the commission is to support us in our application. We're not asking for any new programming or any new commitments to us other than those that exist. You'll see I've listed on there, I mentioned our teen court program, which we always already worked with the state's attorney to create that program here. And it's been a very successful program to help with prevention services, is what we like to call it, to make sure that those kids find a better path forward from the mistakes that they've made while they're still young. And then you'll also notice on there that we would ask you to continue helping us find those problems that people are having here in Yankton County, identify them, and see how the club can be a solution to those problems. So this grant could be a great opportunity for our club and for our community, and we would appreciate your support.
Is it a grant from a government or is it from a private foundation?
It's a federal government.
Okay.
Transportation, do you have that scope defined yet? Is it just within city limits or within so many?
We do not. I think there would be a lot of interest with throughout the entire county. And I think we could have a lot of families who would benefit if we could extend it to the whole county. Our plan is to send a survey out through the school to find the exact need before we plan exactly how we'll fulfill that need. But, you know, there's always staffing considerations that go along with that. Because we have a rule at the club that there always has to be at least two other people with a kid. And so we might have to send two staff if we're delivering one kid home. So there's some things that have to be worked out depending on exactly where the need is. But that's something that we'll definitely study. We have the full five years to implement all of our programs fully. And so that might be one that we might not have implemented year one, but by the end of year five, we'll have it implemented.
My kids go to the Boys and Girls Club, especially in the summer, and they just have a great time. It's, you said twenty-five dollars per year is what we pay, and that includes meals and everything. I mean, it's a wonderful deal for a parent. I almost feel guilty only paying twenty-five dollars because really the benefit is so much more than that. And I just want to say that my kids really enjoy it. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No, I was looking at this agreement. That probably needs to be changed.
Oh, yep.
There's a typographical error on the, under description of comment that we probably would need to change.
Before signature.
It says Moody County, and, you know, Yankton is such a better county, so.
Right. We do have three locations, and so we've done this application before with success in other counties. So we're hoping to make it a success here, too.
If you want to just send a new copy in.
Yep. All right, thank you very much.
I would entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of support of the Boys and Girls Club collaboration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the collaboration and partnership forum with the Boys and Girls Club. Further discussion?
I guess my kids go there. Would any of the commissioners think that that's a conflict of interest for me?
No.
Okay. Then I guess I would maintain my second.
I would abstain because I'm on the board of directors, advisory board of the Boys and Girls Club.
Further discussion? So we have a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. So if you just send it to Patty and I'll sign, and we'll be good to go. Thank you for coming. All right. Number eight, Mr. Solacek, would you come forward? And we'll pester you with questions.
All right, preservation grant agreement. My paper's messed up here. It's just a work agreement for payment and, if they were to not make their deadline and so on and so forth. I guess...
Remind us which two bridges these are.
This would be for the preservation grants on 301 and 448. You'd go a half mile south. And then the other one would be a mile and a half north of Utica. This would be for the micro-surfacing, epoxy, bridge deck epoxy sealing. So I'll go through and clean the deck and reseal it.
Both of these are pretty sound structurally. They just need some continued mail.
I'd have to look up the year on that one, on 448, but I believe that one is late nineties.
Okay, so it's in good shape.
Real good structure. And then the one north of Utica is a good structure, too. It has got a load rating, but it's a good structure.
Makes sense to preserve their life, yeah.
I went back through those reports. They're all in that upper tier of rating.
And the one north of Utica there, I can't remember the year either, but it's not a super old structure. So...
Further questions on the agreement?
You ready for a motion?
I am.
Madam Chairman, I move approval of the preservation grant agreement with the Journey Group.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement as presented. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agreement is approved. Signed, okay.
Do you remember what the dollar amount was for? I remember it was several hundred thousand dollars, was it not, that we got for both of these? Do you have the dollar amount?
I would be fibbing if I told you a dollar amount.
Okay.
It was...
It was, could you get me that?
I was just looking at the numbers. It's in the five-year plan, too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I can get you the numbers. On our cost share amount or on?
Well, it was, I believe it was seven hundred thousand, several hundred thousand we were getting from the state as their portion, was it not?
I would have to...
I won't hold you to it.
I want to say below two hundred.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was thinking.
For both.
For both of them, yeah.
Then, second, I have a resolution to delete bridges from the NBIS. That's the National Bridge Inspection Standards. Anyways, we have two bridges in the county, well, one. First one here is the Structure 68010-134. From, if you're familiar, Joe Substation, you'd go a mile west and then about half mile south, there's an old truss bridge. I'd have to look back on the records, but it's been probably close to eight years since there's been a bridge deck on it. Car collided with the, with the one corner of the bridge, and there was enough damage there to, they bent the truss. So it's been, it's been closed for a number of years. And I guess this would get it off of our inventory. And then also in the future here, we could possibly vacate that mile.
That, we still maintain that, those roads then? Or are they minimum maintenance? Or what, are they?
Right now, the farmers on both ends own the ground on both sides, and they fenced it off. They've made gate there, and they run their cattle. So there's no sense in keeping it. And it'd be a, then we could, that'd be one of the first miles we could vacate. And then the second one, or do you guys have more questions on that one? The second one from Johnson Bridge, if you had head west up the hill, quarter mile, and then go north, approximately a mile, there's a, as of right now, there's a box culvert there, and it is under twenty-foot measurement, which it no longer needs to be on the annual inspections. Talking with Cody up in here, we could take that one off of the inventory also.
That's the one by Mike Coyle's house, right, that got replaced?
Probably three, four years ago.
Yeah, I think, yeah. With the James River, I think we contributed some money to this.
That one from a rickety old bridge, too. I think the bridge was down to six ton and...
Yeah.
And...
And that road got built up there as well? That's that one, yep.
Right, right, yeah. It's right next to that farm place there.
Now, that made that into a, that box culvert did a good job.
Right.
Further questions for Mike?
Are you ready for a motion?
If no one else has questions, certainly. All right.
I move approval of the resolution to delete the bridge. Do you want them individually or both together?
We'll have to do them individually.
All right. I move that we approve the resolution to delete the Bridge 68010-134 from the National Bridge Inspection, was it System, NBIS?
Standards.
Standards?
Read that number one more time for me, Dan.
I got 68-010-134.
Okay.
And due to the fact that the bridge isn't there anymore.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove the Bridge 68-010-134 from the National Bridge Inventory System.
Bridge Inspection Standards.
Inspection System. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Bridge 68010134 has been removed. I would entertain a motion for the second bridge.
I move approval of the resolution to delete Bridge 68-134-0109 from the National Bridge Inspection Standard. What number is it?
68132109.
Okay, that one from the standard.
Okay, now you're going to have to read that one more time. I'm a little slow.
68-132-109.
Why does it say this one here, then? Is that a different one? Oh.
That was the one you did first.
Okay. Oh, you have that, you have that twice, then, don't you? There and then there again.
Nope.
This eight?
Yep.
68-132-109, that one?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a motion. Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove the Bridge 6, Joe did, 68-132-109 from the registry. Further discussion?
I'd just like to note that the reason we're doing it is because it's been replaced with a concrete box culvert.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Bridge is removed. Is that it?
Um, update on...
Just a second. Dan, to your question about what those, those grants are going to cost, I had it right here. The one that is north of Utica will cost the county thirty-five thousand. It will cost the state almost one hundred and eighteen thousand. And the next one, is it in Marindale?
Yep, yeah.
It'll be thirty thousand for the county and a hundred and one thousand dollars for the state.
So basically, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what we're getting for grants, and then that cost us is...
Yeah, about two hundred and twenty is what the state is matching.
Good. Excellent.
Um, update on Jamesville Bridge. They moved in Thursday, Friday, started work yesterday. I stopped down there today, and there's some cross braces in between the two girders, between each pair of girders, there's cross beams. They ended up cutting them, cross brackets out, welded in a I-beam, and jacked the deck about an eighth inch off the concrete. Took a concrete saw and cut an inch and a half, two inches into the vent cap, into the side of the vent cap. And they were jackhammering on getting the bad material out. There's some steel plates. Well, I guess, jumping ahead there, once they get that all jackhammered out, they'll sandblast it, make sure it's good and clean. They're hoping to pour concrete this week. And then they would have to let that cure, and hopefully next week, they can put the plates on it, steel plates. And all goes well next Friday, if not the next week. So...
Are we going to make the timeframe?
Yep. So it should...
Everybody pray for good weather. That's all we need.
Well, and they were, because that's what I was kind of calling, calling out on, too. And they said, well, it's under the bridge, so we'll be all right.
As long as they get the concrete poured, then the rest should come together.
Well, and it kind of works out good right now with the river being frozen. They can work off the ladders off the, off the ice.
All right. Did you want to comment on FEMA at this time?
FEMA, FEMA's waiting on me as of right now. Can't blame them. We're working on getting our paperwork. There's just a lot of, a lot of things going on in the, in the office right now with FEMA and other things, getting geared up for the year. Hoping midweek, we can start hammering down on FEMA.
And to your defense, a lot of that is rework because we were told we could apply for more than we were originally told.
Right.
So we're, you, you are going through time cards and stuff, which is tedious.
We're backpedaling a little bit. It's going through eight months worth of, ten months worth of time cards right now. So, you know, because some...
Do you need some help?
It was our first, since I've been, started in '04. Anyways, it was our first FEMA event. And, well, time cards, well, sometimes the guys wouldn't put down the trailer, or, you know, they're putting down a skid loader time, but no pickup or trailer. Well, we can collect on that. So now we're going back and, well, how did this, how did the excavator get here, you know? Well, there's no truck. You drove that thing twenty miles? That didn't happen.
It's hard on the undercarriage, right?
So...
Well, do you need a hand? Are you short-handed? Would that help? I know how, I mean, this FEMA stuff is super time-sensitive.
On cold days, I've been having, one guy that's been pretty sharp on it, helping me. I think we'll have another, another day of finishing up time cards, and we can actually start entering in, entering them into the spreadsheet. And once we get them all entered in the spreadsheet, which, that really won't, a week at the most to enter in spreadsheets. And then after that, we just got to run up all the, all the materials, material costs and receipts and all that stuff. So, yeah, I'm talking like it's going to be a breeze, but it's, nothing's ever passed. Well, and then just like the ER stuff, you know, with Jamesville Bridge, that's gonna, how that works is we have to pay the bill, and then I have to submit it to the state to get reimbursed for it. Well, that's another thing, you know, that's a big, big chunk of money that we got to fork out of the highway department budget. We got to get that money back. So there's another, a whole nother group of emergency stuff to submit.
Thank you.
And your question on, do we need help? Yes, it'd be nice to have help, but yet it's just, sometimes you just got to do it. You know, it...
Well, there's time.
Show somebody.
Exactly. There's time to train the person, and if they don't get it the first time, Exactly, there's time to train the person, and if they don't get it the first time, then we have to re-enter it anyway.
Sure.
Right.
So, it's...
I know that...
I just don't want things to get mixed up.
Sure, yeah, all the, you know, departments have, have told me that if something, you know, you needed just a body to organize something, you know, we could, certainly, we want to help you out if you need it, so... Any word on when we're supposed to get the state or federal funding from the March disaster? Coming up on a year?
As soon as I get it submitted, they're, they're waiting, it's, it's waiting on me.
All right.
So I'm hoping, before, before the end of summer, we'll see a lot of money rolling in, so, that's my goal.
Do you have any deadlines imposed on you to get that turned in?
On myself?
Well, I mean, does it have to be in by this date, or are you aware of anything like that?
FEMA, well, we got another year and a half from now. And the ER, I'd have to look at their deadline again, but that's pretty, pretty far out, so...
All right, you should be able to make it.
All right.
Enjoy your evening.
Girls basketball, Chris.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. All right, item nine, abatement request, Lori Mackey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, tonight, we have three abatement requests. These were all brought forth by our office, things that came up during the year last year that are appropriate to be taken care of now, because the tax bills just went out. In no particular order here, we've got a fire destroyed a house on February 10th, 2019. This abatement request is made by the Director of Urbanization Office, and it's our recommendation that you approve the abatement. The house, you know, from February 10th on, the taxes would have been $219.59.
Move approval of the abatement.
So, hang on a second, we gotta figure out which one...
That's number three on our, I think, I believe so.
Sorry, I should have looked at the particular order.
We should make note in the motion of which one it is.
It's three, yeah, three in our back. Fire destroyed, February 10th, right?
For parcel 78330001100.
Don, would you like to state your motion with the parcel number in it?
For parcel 78.
I move approval of the abatement request for 78330001.100. Thanks.
Do you want a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to abate the parcel 78.330.001.100. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries. Abatement approved.
All right, the next one, this abatement request is made by our office. We made an error in not removing the value, so this shouldn't have, not have been valued at all for the 2019 assessment. The parcel is 05016999160. The amount to be abated would be, is $617.10.
That's our first one, I believe, 05016999?
Yes.
Nine, okay. So the house was removed, and then it just didn't get taken the year before?
The year before, even, and we neglected to get the value taped, removed. Claire, Claire.
I'd move approval of abatement for parcel 05016999160 for $617.10.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the abatement for parcel 05016999160. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries, abatement approved.
Okay, the last one I have, this house was removed, demolished on September 9th of Amount to be abated would be $311.03. Pardon?
What was that, it was $311?
$311.03.
Where was this house located at?
In Bramson addition, out in the Lake area. Lot A, Lot 3 Bramson. I didn't put down the street address. Oh, I have it on a note, 160 River Run Road.
Further discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of abatement for parcel 13014300070 for $311.03.
Zero, second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the abatement for 13.014.300.070. Further discussion?
Ask one question, Lori, is it a state requirement that you have to get our approval for 200 or 300?
Yes, it is.
'Cause we can break, break a road grader down, and it costs 20,000 bucks to fix, but we, somebody makes a little air here, at $200, we gotta waste a lot of time.
It's a little different here, this is by statute, Chapter 10, Section 18, 4.
You say it is, I'm fine.
I think when you're dealing with people's taxes, I, there should be some check and balance, and, so, I, I understand what you're saying, Don, it's a couple hundred bucks, but...
But these are taxes that we're budgeted for.
How does, how does that work when we abate this tax? I see some of it goes to, say, the school district and fire districts, does, do those places also lose that fund?
They all lose that money.
Okay, so it's not, it's not just the county, but the, the school and road tax and all of those also don't get that as well? Okay.
I have a motion and second on the floor, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, abatement approved.
Thank you. I've also got our report on what we've been up to this last year. I gave you a brief summary here. Between Michelle and Jeff, they reviewed over 1,000 parcels again this last summer. And while they're out doing that type of work, we're working in the office, processing, this year it was 986 transfers to update the records, and 59 plats, updating the map and the property records. And the plat, for the plat processing, Jeff, who's out there appraising, also budgets some of his time to stay in and do those plats on the map. We also processed 110 splits and 15 property merges. We were audited again by the Department of Revenue, and again, we just are blessed to have very fortunate, are very good audits every single year, and that's because we've got a good team working in the office on looking over everything, make sure everything's done correctly, except for three, three abatements.
Still a pretty high percentage, though, of all, you, you can't, nobody's perfect.
It is.
Very good.
And not like we've got spare time, but we did make some time this last year. Matt came, or had visited with a vendor at one of our conferences, and saw an opportunity to help out the zoning office that was going through some staffing changes, a way to help them streamline their permitting process. So, there's a, an app, I don't want to call it an app, there's a component of Beacon that is for permitting, and Matt worked directly with the vendor, and I don't know how many hours, I should have looked up how many hours that took, but he devoted a considerable amount of time to get that software implemented. Then, once it was all done, and he trained and passed that over to Jessica in the zoning office, Jessica and Matt sat down, Jessica did the voice-overs and, and selected screens to show in the video, Matt did the technical work on that with sound and, and editing and stuff to get that done, so that there are how-to videos for the public to learn how to use that permitting software as well. So, we, we devoted some time there, and everybody knows it flooded last year. So, we wanted to be on the front edge of that, and what we did is we, we did a postcard mailing to people we buffered using our map. We buffered the area along the flood route, and sent out postcards to all of those people, and asked them if they had flood damage, that they should contact our office, so that we could follow up on that. That, this was different from FEMA, this was regarding their assessment. And we did get some good feedback, but then, when we didn't get as much feedback as what we had hoped, Matt also drove out in those areas and talked to people, and what we ended up doing was 50 homes along that flood route had property damage that wasn't repaired by the time we had our legal assessment date on November 1st. So it's, it's an opportunity for us to accurately value their property, taking into consideration that damage. The 50 homes, the amount of the reduction that we made overall was $942,000. So, those people benefited from that, and we'll be following up with those in the fall next year again, to see if they've made repairs by then. Other things that are going on, growth this year looks pretty comparable to other years. I looked over this, this year, our unaudited growth is $35,388,500. Last year, it was 34 million, 34.7 million. 2018 was a high year, it was 52.8 million, but in 17, it was 36.9, and 2016, it was 32.4. So it stays fairly consistent, but slowly growing, other than that high year we had in 2018. Some of that is attributed to the Dakota Plains project, and what Westbrook was starting out right about then, too. So, countywide, our unaudited value is $2,299.
Two billion.
And, oh, two billion.
There you go.
Excuse me, 2,299. Countywide, that's an increase of 8.2%, and that sounds like a lot, but what that also takes into consideration, that's our 1% growth, and the rest of it is value changes. And we are required to make those value changes to stay in line with market.
So that's simply appreciation, that's not new?
1% of that is, is new construction. The rest is just value changes, trending those up to meet market. Let's see, on the ag side of it, the crop, top crop soil now is $3,774. That actually went down 2.5% from the prior year. Grass went up a little bit, grass is at 2,136, and that's an increase of just shy of 6%. I gave you a chart that showed comparison of values. It compares the city of Yankton to the small towns, to the organized and unorganized, to give you a total, total of the, of the whole. So you've got the percent of total value, and you've got the percent increased or decreased. And keep in mind, again, that's not all growth, that's, that's growth and value changes. Then below that, comparing a little differently, we've got ag and ag buildings compared to non-ag. You'll see that non-ag there is about 68% of the total value. And up above, your organized and unorganized townships are pretty much the same as far as portion of the total value. The last chart I gave you is tax increment districts, just so that you can see how they're doing. You've, in the first column, you've got the, what they're known by, Dakota Plains, Morgan Square, and such. The next are the numbers that we assign in our parcel records to those. Then you've got the date created, that's the date that, that the TIF became active. Then I put the total value of that whole district right now. The next column, where it says base, that's the value that it was when that TIF was created. So you can see by looking at that, the increment is the last column, the increment is how much it grew since we implemented those TIFs. Most of them, they were the city, one of them is the county. The Dakota Plains one is the county one, the rest are all city TIFs. So just so that you've got an idea how those are progressing. Then I gave you a few charts on the back, we've got countywide property values, slowly and steadily increasing over the years. I gave you a 10-year graph there, just so you can see, it's, it's really steady. Distribution of values between town and township, and then ag values. And the ag values, it's a chart that's a little bit harder to read. If you look at the red line and that pink line, the red line is crop, is sale price of the crop acres per, crop soils per acre. Then you've got the crop values on the pink line. The green line is grass sales per acre, and that bluish line is the, the values, at grass values per acre. So you can see we're assessing on a pretty steady rate and slow, and typically below the sale price. And that's because the state tells us how we're to value ag, ag ground. I mentioned Beacon earlier with that permitting software, we'll probably see higher usage there on Beacon as a whole, just because of that. Right now, our total requests for the year is 1,099,000. Average request in a day is 3,000. Average request per visitor, so if I logged on, the average request per visitor is 19.10. That means the average person's looking at 19 things when they log on to Beacon. So they're getting some good use out of it. We have been, it's, it's not revenue neutral, we've been making money on Beacon slowly each year. The cost to maintain it, and, and Pace Schneider to host that site, has always been below what our subscription rates are coming in. It's getting closer, that gap's getting closer, and what we'll probably look at doing is maybe towards the end of this year, probably come back to you and talk about maybe doing a small rate increase on the Beacon. We hadn't, have not raised it since we started this in 2012, but I would like to, at some point, increase it a little bit, just so that we stay ahead of what it actually costs. And I don't think there'll be any trouble with that, as, as long as we're reasonable with our increase, and that way, we're still making money. We've got boards coming up in April, and I would like to get a date set for that tonight, so that when it comes time, we've got certain notifications that we have to do, that we can get those out in a timely fashion. I was wondering about doing April 17th, it's a Friday. Reason I chose that is because the last day to appeal your property is April 7th, to consolidated boards, and that happens to be Easter week. You've got Holy Thursday and Good Friday that week, so, and I don't want to put it off too long, but I do want enough time to prepare, should we, let's say we get a lot of appeals. We need... We need to have time to adequately prepare for those. So, I'm thinking the 17th would be a good thing unless somebody else has got conflict with that. Works for you?
Good. I believe I'm open.
Okay. Should we go with that?
Yeah, I'd say pencil that in for...
What time, what time then?
Usually, we start around noon. We have started a little earlier. It really depends on how many appeals we have. Might bump it up to 11. It really depends. We'll let you know how things are going as we progress.
Are you going to go through the explanation? You guys did that last year, didn't you?
Yes.
That's always good to have a refresher on how, because there's very specific criteria that you guys have to use to assess, and I think it's always good for us to get that refresher.
Yep, we can certainly do that. I agree that I think it is a good idea to refresh on that, because people, especially at boards, come in with different ideas on what their property should be valued, but we do have to satisfy this criteria. So, you know, we can see their point a lot of times, but this is what we have to use.
Yeah, it was eye-opening to me, is you don't have a lot of wiggle room for your assessment. People think you, I don't know, roll the dice and choose their number, but there's very specific criteria that you have to follow, and I thought it was really, really good information last year, so, because I'd be in favor of that again.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one question. Going back to your chart on comparison of values, 2016 to 2019.
Sure.
Under which of those dollar amounts, and whatever year you want, are rural homes?
Rural homes in the top part of that graph are going to be under...
I'm looking, I'm looking at a chart.
Yep, we're looking at the chart, and there's two sections of it. There's the top part where it says "City of Yankton, Small Towns, Organized Townships, and Unorganized." Your small acreages are going to be in both the organized and the unorganized townships. You know, they could be in Odessa, and they could be in Gayville. One's organized, one's not.
So, those numbers do not reflect the land values?
Those would be total.
Yes, these are total values.
So, when you look at small towns, that's all the value in Utica, Leesterville, Gayville, et cetera.
Right.
So, down below, where you have ag land, ag buildings, and non-ag...
That's just a way of, different way of looking at the whole.
I'm asking about just the farm homes.
Yeah, we don't have that separated out in this particular chart.
We've got, the reason I ask that, Lori, is we've gotten several questions when we've been meeting with rural township people about the valuation of farmhouse versus city houses.
Oh, I can tell you without even looking that they are lower. All other things being equal, they are lower in value, and that's just because it is harder to sell a house with this big acreage than it is to sell a house that maybe is on a half-acre lot. You've got a lot more buyers for this house on a half-acre lot than you do for that large But if you'd like some numbers, we can certainly put that together for you for any future meetings.
I might have that done. I think I asked once, it's probably...
Matt, did you do that already?
Six months, a year ago, but I'll look for that, because I...
I know we did it last year, but I don't think we've done it this year yet. So, we could just update what we did for you last year. Okay.
Additional questions for Lori?
Can I get a copy like Joe asked for, too?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, well, when we get it done, we can, that's email format, right? It wasn't a huge map. Okay. Yep, we'll send that out to all of you. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you for the graphs and everything, it's easier to see.
Sure, thank you. All right, item number 10, liaison for ditch board. We did have a ditch board meeting last Tuesday? I think it was last Tuesday, was it Tuesday? I believe so. Four of us were there, and it was a good meeting, well-attended. We were there quite some time, talking about the challenges of the ditches. There was a lot of confusion as to where ditches are and such, so Mr. Vedder has been kind enough to put together some very large maps that we will make available probably in the hall for a while, maybe, and then on the website, so folks can go and look to see where the clay ditch is, where the lateral, the lateral extension is, et cetera. But there was some concern with the involvement of the county commission in being sure to follow up on request and direct work and such. So, this is on the agenda to see if it would be worthwhile to add a specific ditch liaison person to our assignment list that we normally go through in January. I am now on the drainage commission, and, but Joe has maybe offered to take on this ditch liaison position, so either way, one of this probably needs to officially be listed so it is not forgotten, especially when new commissioners come in and you have no clue what the ditch is all about, especially when I live on the west side of the county and such. So, I don't know if we have comments on that or not.
I do think it's necessary. It's pretty evident that it's necessary and confusing based off the meeting. You know, even people paying into the ditch district show up to the meeting not knowing which district, or which ditch they're paying into, and which one runs where, and I think there's a vol and lateral, there's a first, not first addition, first...
Extension.
First extension of the vol and lateral, and then there's a vol and lateral one that is not part of the county. So, just to keep all that straight, I think.
And there was some work requested at the meeting as well.
I guess, like, from my point of view, I would think the drainage liaison, it would be a good fit. You know, I know Joe volunteered to do it, and that's fine, but I guess thinking long-term, it's a good, it's good to have those maybe two together because it is dealing with drainage and, you know, we had, we've had that, you know, somebody was emergency management liaison, somebody else was local emergency planning, and it didn't really make sense. I'm fine with somebody else doing it, but I think, long-term, it would just make sense for that to be part of the drainage person's task. I mean, it's, it shouldn't be a tremendous amount of work. I wouldn't think it would, you know, a couple meetings and stuff.
I think the challenge with it is, for so many years, so little has been done...
True.
...to follow up, that it is going to be a very big job for two or three years, because these projects, depending on when you can get in there, like last year, you couldn't get in. So, all of your work gets delayed, so to have someone dedicated to making sure we are, we're always circling back and figuring out what needs to be done and such. So, I hesitate to say it's not going to be a lot of work, because I have a feeling it's going to be a ton of work this year, for sure.
Well, what do you envision this position doing? Because we authorized the work at the, at that ditch meeting with the two boards, correct? That work was authorized? So, is it, do you envision this position, you know, coordinating to have the contractors come, or what is, what tasks would you assign with that?
I think technically, it's our responsibility now to take that and go get bids and get the contractor hired, whether we do that or work with, you know, a leader that lives along there paying in.
Sure.
Appoint, you know, somebody, but somebody needs to make sure that that, that bid goes out and that work gets done.
Could that be incorporated into a duty of our current drainage board? And then, you'd have more people with their eyes on it? Just throwing out ideas here.
I would hesitate to marry the drainage commission with the ditch board, because they're two totally, to me, they're separate entities in themselves, because one has taxing authority, and the other one is overseeing the ordinance for essentially installing drain tile. So, I hesitate to, I don't want to say burden, the drainage commission with receiving all of that information. To me, it's putting another party in the circle that doesn't need to be in the circle. So, and I'd be more than happy to be the lead on the ditch and to certainly rely on my fellow commissioner to my left, because he knows the area so much better than I am. But I really think that we need to have somebody in charge of it, because in the past, we have relied on essentially volunteers, folks who live in the area to say, "Oh, we need to do something, I'll volunteer to go get bids." And then, whether they do that in a timely fashion or not is up to them, and then we get someone else calling and saying, "Well, do you know where we're at on this?" She said, "Well, I don't know where we're at on this." So, but I think we need someone to have a thumb on what's going on, certainly for the next two or three years.
Yeah, I guess, we all know work needs to be done. Is there any liability for this person if, you know, there's cost overruns or, you know, something happens?
I think it's just a point of contact, mostly.
Who is going to be coordinating the effort? I mean, is this a, like you were saying, a point of contact, or is this the person in charge, making sure all of the stuff gets done? I guess, you know, with all of our other liaisons, you know, we either have boards or we have department heads, and I guess, who is this person, you know, really working with day-to-day, and what authority do they have? And I guess, what are the limits to that? I guess I'd ask that.
I would say that the main objective is to just, one, have a point of contact when people call and they want to know who, okay, I want some ditch work done, how do I, how do I get this going? So, just a point of contact for that, and then somebody to probably line up bids and do whatever. All of those ultimately come back to us as ditch board to do any decision-making or anything, so, I think it's just more of, more just point of contact and someone to kind of correlate some of these things.
That's, it sounds good.
If they can't really make decisions, they have to come to...
Right.
Okay.
...to the board for you guys to make decisions. If you want to change, you can just amend the...
The assignment or whatever.
And appoint who you want. You can just add it, and I'll just put it in the minutes.
Sure. Joey, you're going to take care of...
Yeah, I will. Not that I want it all that bad, but everybody has things going on, so it's important that somebody does that.
I'd like to make a suggestion that you have some outside help, other than the commissioners. And there's an individual in this room that's probably forgotten more about drainage ditches than all of us know together, and his name is Buddy Fring. And if he would be willing to help you, he's older than I am, so, he was here when...
He helped dig him?
When Lewis and Clark almost came. He's very knowledgeable, and I'd like to suggest that you use him.
Yeah, I've had some conversations with Buddy already, so...
Yeah. Buddy, would you be willing to help us out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you just need a motion to appoint Joe then?
To amend the...
It's not because you used to combine my beans.
Then, the job, or the, for the commission, your assignments, just in a motion.
Are you ready for a motion? All right, I guess I would move to amend the duty assignments of the commissioners and appoint Commissioner Joe Healy as the liaison for the ditch board. Forever. No, just kidding. For this year, for 2020. And then, well, is that the plan, to do it every year for 2020?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Healy as the ditch liaison. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Buddy, you might end up in a Super Bowl commercial if you're with this guy, so be careful.
Yeah, we call him Joe Hollywood, no.
Item number 11, moving on. Diane and James Johnson and Big Bucks LLC Platt. Mr. Vedder.
We have one plat this evening, Big Bucks Edition, as he said. It's a replat of blocks 1, 2, and 3 of Government Lot 1, of the southeast quarter of Section 12, also being part of the northeast of the southeast of Section 12, all being in Township 93 North, Range 55 West, and being located in Government Lot 4 and Government Lot 6 in Section 7, Township 93 North, Range 54 West. And this is 37.36 acres, and Planning Commission recommends approval.
You ready for a motion?
Yep.
Move approval of the Big Bucks LLC Platt?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plat as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Platt's approved. All right, moving on to item 12. Second reading of the Yankton County Commission Adoption of Zoning Ordinance and MAP Yankton County Ordinance 2020, Ordinance Number 20-01.
Ordinance 20-01, ordinance, ordinance of re-adopting the entire ordinance, number 16, and all amendments thereto hereby establishing zoning regulations for Yankton County South Dakota and providing for the administration enforcement and amendment thereof for the repeal of all resolutions and ordinances in conflict therewith. Whereas Yankton County adopted Ordinance Number 16 in December 12, 2003, amended August 11, 2008, and updated December 28, 2018 thereof. And whereas the Yankton County, South Dakota Board of County Commissioners deems it necessary for the purpose of promoting health, safety, and general welfare of the county to re-adopt the entire ordinance, number 16, whereas Yankton County adopted zoning ordinance 2020 and MAP as followed, as allowed by SDCL 11-2, second reading.
This is a hearing, so at this time, public comment is open. Would anybody care to make a public comment about the proposal? There being no public comment, public comment is closed. Discussion by the commissioners. There being no discussion, I would entertain a motion.
We just need to approve the second reading or the changes?
I believe we just need to approve the changes.
Are we approving the changes, or are we adopt, Rob?
Adopting.
We'd adopt them? So, it would be, it would be a motion to adopt the Yankton County Ordinance 2020 and, Yankton Ordinance and MAP, Yankton County Ordinance 2020, or that's what the motion would be? I guess I'd, I'd move approval of the Yankton County zoning ordinance and MAP, Yankton County Ordinance 2020, ordinance number 20-01. Is that a correct motion?
Yeah.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the 20, Ordinance 2020, Ordinance Number 20-01 as presented. Further discussion? We will do a roll call vote on this.
Yes.
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 There being five ayes, motion passes. Resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to item 13, which is our code of conduct discussion that has been extended from last meeting.
I have something I'd like to say about the code of conduct.
Go ahead.
Thank you. A few Yankton County Commission meetings ago, State's Attorney Rob Clemish complained about, during public comment, about me sending emails. Then Cherry, Cherry Losz, chairman, also did that during the public comment, complained about me sending emails. Later during the meeting, at the second public comment, State's Attorney Rob Clemish complained that I had been sending emails again. State's Attorney Rob Clemish and Cherry Losz have set a dangerous precedence by doing this during public comment. Now, any Yankton employee or manager could, if they want, slam another coworker during public comment. Example, the sheriff could discipline his deputies or the auditor or treasurer could discipline workers. Or one coworker could slam another Yankton County employee if they wanted to during public There's more, but I'll stop there for now.
Further discussion.
Well, what kind of feedback did we have from department heads on this, both elected and not elected?
We did bring this up at our department head meeting and general consensus was we needed to proceed. There were no changes suggested. If I recall, there was not a request to incorporate it with the handbook. They felt it standing separate was the right way to go. Joe, if you recall any other specific comments?
No, that's the gist of it. Drawn a blank. Paul, I think, has his own.
They do. They have their own mission statement.
Emergency management does. So that was the only thing brought up there, you know, just making sure it's not conflicting with them. But other than that, no, there was really no opposition to it or.
So if we pass this, we kind of describe a whole bunch of characteristics that we'd like to all maintain, but it doesn't say anything about what's going to happen to a person if he just totally ignores it. And that's, that's the critical thing, I think.
And, you know, really, what can we do to another elected official?
Not much.
If.
As we all know.
I guess, you know, I think it's really good material what's in here, but when we had our HR person came and spoke to us last year, he did mention for us to be careful about having too many standalone documents separate from the handbook. And I guess I'm wondering about having this, maybe we could have this as it is, but still incorporated in the handbook? Yes, that's my concern, is having different documents in different places.
Say, for example, someone shows signs of partiality or prejudice or disrespect, what's done? What's the recourse?
Well, I think the recourse is the chairman would have to run the meeting. To point, Don, where the person could be removed pending the decision of the chairman and how to run the meeting. To a disruptive state.
I agree with Dan. I think everything in here is good, sounds good, but other than reminding us how we're supposed to behave, what does it do? Nothing.
Just a reminder.
Well, are there suggestions for what we should add to it? Otherwise, it's the same discussion we had at the previous meeting.
Did we do public comment on this yet? Oh, well.
I mean, that's.
Maybe there isn't any public comment, but if there is, I guess I would like to take some.
I'm okay with adopting it. I just say, what have we done? You know? And hopefully, everybody would abide by the things that are in here and it doesn't include just the commission, it includes everybody working for the county.
Right. I put it in the same category as the mission statement and, you know, it's maybe a reminder and a compass, I guess, but that's the extent of it.
My opinion, if we want to incorporate another section that says, these are the steps that occur if you violate it, then I don't think we should adopt it tonight. But I do feel we need to put real effort into it before the next meeting. Otherwise, it's just the same, it's the same discussion.
If we put steps in, is there any, I mean, can we?
I'm not aware of anything that we can do. I mean, I know Don makes the comment, basically stating the obvious, you know?
Sadly, these days, we have to state the obvious.
Yeah.
Is the challenge.
No, no, no. I agree adopting it is a nice idea and what to do and a reminder. I'm agreeing, but besides that, I don't know really. I know it says in here, you have private and public reprimand. We have that anyhow. You know, you have that ability.
So that's where you start having two places to go to get, I'd rather that would be the portion that would be in the handbook, which we already have in the handbook, so.
Well, you know, we have a mission statement, which in less detail covers a lot of that. And then if we adopt this, we'll have this. And then we'll have the stuff in the handbook. You know, that's really three different things and they're all really good information. But, you know, just like our HR person said, how do all three of those mesh? And we don't want to have things that conflict with each other. You know, particularly when it comes to violations of the code of conduct.
Public comment. Go ahead. Come forward.
I was a virtual election.
Thank you.
I was on the county for 12 years and I knew what you should do and what you shouldn't do. As professionals, I don't think you have to have a book to tell you what to do and not to do. And I think you're really stepping on dangerous ground with this. Number one is freedom of speech. Now, as a chairman, yeah, you can remove people if they get violent. That's no problem. But to express their own opinions, I think you're walking on awful dangerous ground. And all the days of this lawsuits, look at Washington. Give me an example. I mean, if you turn the TV on. And I don't think, you better step in this area, but it's hard to lay up to. But I disagree 100% on that one. I'd vote no if I was there. Tell you that right now. Thank you.
All right. Other comments from the commission?
Yes, it took us months to do the mission statement because we wanted to get it right. And I guess I don't, I don't have any issues with anything that's said in here, but, you know, maybe we could gather more public input, more input from, I know the department heads have had some. Have they had a chance to disseminate that to the other people in their subordinates and get feedback from them? I mean, because it's really a, you know, this also affects, you know, zoning and planning board and drainage and, you know, task forces and other ones of those. I guess have any of those had any input on this?
Has the county ever had a mission statement before?
Not till we approved it. Not until we approved it. When was that? In January?
So it's kind of a feel-good thing for everybody that what we're going to do, kind of like what former Commissioner Bruce Jensen just said. He said he knew what to say, knew what to do. A mission statement is a bunch of words. How are you going to hold up to it? How are you going to, it's like State's Attorney Clemish just said about the code of conduct, there's no rules, there's no way to enforce anything. So I guess I would wonder what good is a mission statement except to give everybody a nice warm fuzzy feeling.
I think Joe said it really good. This is a good reminder of people, you know, what we should be striving for. So I guess I, because I don't have an issue with what it says, I just wanted to make sure all those who will be affected by it have a chance to, you know, give input on it and review it before we approve it. If we approve it, I guess.
I think this really just goes, it doesn't go down to county employees outside of department heads, members of boards, commissions, committees, task force, and other pointed advisory groups. You know, I guess I tend to agree with Cherry. We've talked about this, I think we started this in December.
We started this last October, November.
October.
Fring is where it came from.
You know, there's been no proposed changes. The department has reviewed it. I would say we either approve it or don't. There's no teeth to it. It's just a guidance and if we feel we don't need it, let's move on.
I believe it's the fifth time it's been in front of the commission. So if there's no motion, we will move on.
I'd move we approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the code of conduct that has been presented. Further discussion. We will do a roll call vote.
Kevin?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Clemish?
Yes.
Losz?
Yes. Motion passes. Code of conduct has been adopted. We will now move on to public comments, item 14. Would anybody like to make a public comment? There being no public comments, it is closed and we move on to commissioner updates. Mr. Clemish, would you start?
Attending the emergency management ICS classes, I've got two more days of that. It's really good information. Other than that, I don't have much of anything. As at my senior citizen center board meeting and Mr. Dave Hosmer shared with me an experience that he had with our emergency management department and what a professional group it is and, you know, how they saved a life with their new life packs. And it was a really touching story and I think a lot of times those aren't heard by everyone. And I won't give any specifics of who it was or where it was, but it's just the employees that we have in Yankton County really did a great job and they affected somebody's life with a positive. And he just wanted to share that with me and I figured I'd take this opportunity to share that with the rest of the board.
Joe?
Well, as I'm now the ditch liaison, there were some questions that came out of the last meeting. There was a few individuals. I'm going to present these maps with them. I'll get ahold of them and probably just schedule an open meeting, anybody that is concerned or has questions on it, feel free to attend. I don't know when it'll be yet, but I'll put something in the paper. And I was hoping to by tonight, but I forgot to. But we'll be scheduling a town hall meeting in the Lake area in the next, within two weeks, so look for notice in the paper for that.
Don?
I see since the last, last meeting, we had one meeting with townships from up in the northeast corner of the county. And I think the feedback that I received from them is that they were positive about the meetings and, but they're concerned about what's going to be done. So I don't know what our next step is for sure. I think I'd like to have one more meeting to disseminate the information that we got from this meeting, just questions. And, but I'm thinking it's probably, it's about time that we implement a response to them as a commission, in which case I think we need to get a broader audience.
Okay.
Gary?
As many of you know, I was out in Washington DC back in September 2019. I was invited to the White House like all the commissioners were. Only three of us from South Dakota were there. It was pretty poor showing for South Dakota. But I made a lot of connections out there and I just had some correspondence today. And I was out there, I told the Assistant Secretary of the Interior that if I have to beg on my hands and knees for bridges for Yankton County, I will. And she said, no, no, Gary. She said, I'm going to, I'm going to do all I can to find a grant for one bridge. And I said, we need four. And she said, well, there's three of the people over here. But anyway, I've said that before. But anyway, just wanted to keep you updated that I'm on it and I'm going to stay on it until we either get something or they get tired of hearing from me, so. We need four new bridges over the James River in Yankton County and I'm going to do everything I can to get it because I didn't drive out there for nothing. Thank you.
All right, there was a flood meeting. I can't remember when it was, but updated flood maps are proposed and the flood areas have changed. And do we have maps of those printed? We do?
We've had an electronic area for a while.
Okay. So I guess my caution, I guess at this time is I don't know if we need to put it on the agenda to officially discuss it, to make sure that folks are aware if you're building even close to a flood zone, you need to know about it. And if you're in that flood zone, you need to know because these won't be adopted officially for what, two years? So I would sure hate to have someone build a home and then in two years, you're in a flood zone. So just keep in mind that that is moving along. I know the city had some real concerns where some of those things were drawn and so they were working through the process of getting theirs changed. Next Tuesday.
Madam Chairman, may I say something?
Yes.
I guess I'd advise, and I've talked with Mr. Vedder, is I think we should print out at least a small map of that and post it up in the zoning office, just so at least people know what they're getting into because especially in the western part of the county, there's significant changes. significant changes with the flood map, like you and I were both there. And then, I believe, have all the small-town mayors picked up their maps yet?
We had a couple left.
Okay.
That I haven't picked up yet.
I'll get with you after this, and I'll give them a call again. Sorry.
Okay. No, thank you. And then, next Tuesday, the State of the Community address at noon, Amy Leon is speaking. And at 12:30, I'm on tap to speak for the county. So, that is at Minerva's. And I think the meal begins at 11:45. Doors open at 11:30, so feel free to attend that. And then, our next ambulance task force meeting is Monday, March 2nd, at 7:00 PM in this room. We had a really good discussion last night about the potential for ambulance districts, pros and cons, and some other items around that formation. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Tell me the date of the.
Was that what they mean?
Okay. Hang on a second. Don, you're first.
State of community.
That is Tuesday, and Amy starts speaking at noon.
The 26th.
Yep.
25th.
20, 25th.
25th. There you go. Gary?
The 25th of, for Amy Leon?
Yep, at noon, she starts, and I'm at 12:30.
On the 25th?
Yep. So, if we're going to have several people there, then we need an announcement in the paper.
I'll eat lunch at home that day.
You don't want to see me squirm?
Are you going down?
I plan on going.
Gary, you plan on going?
I plan on, yeah.
Okay. So, that'll be three. So, that needs a, that needs an announcement. So.
March 2nd at Minerva's?
Uh, no. That, March 2nd was ambulance. It's Tuesday, the 25th.
25th.
There you go.
I want to ask Joe, you said that you were going to set up a, a meeting out at the lake?
Yes.
Town hall meeting?
Yes.
I would like to go to that, if I could. I haven't been to one.
Correct.
And if you, with you, and even if we have a quorum, can we, can we have three?
Well, we'll just do.
It has to be announced. It'd have to be, we'd have, it'd be a, technically, it'd be a, what would you, what would you recommend on something? Something like that, if there was a quorum, to do a town hall meeting, would we have to have an agenda? And?
Well, with the meeting, is it just more informational? Or would it be?
Well, it'd be, usually how town halls are, you just go and then get public feedback. If there's no, would you have to have an agenda if you're, if it's, three of them are meeting? Just announce it as a quorum?
Okay. Yeah, I want to, I want to be there.
We had a meeting. That's the one you missed.
I'll keep you in the.
Keep me in the loop.
I'll acknowledge you for everything.
Madam Chairman, I had a question. These township meetings, is there going to be one that, is, Don was saying, are we going to have one at the next, like a, one where all the commissioners are going to be there? Or what's the next step with that?
I think that's what Don was probably hinting at, is to have a.
And probably open to the public if they want to sit down.
Is that going to be like a special meeting, or is that going to be at one of our normal meetings? Or what was the proposal for that? I guess I, you brought something up, and either I didn't listen or we didn't finish the thought. Is that, is that something we want to do a separate time? Is that something we want to do just in conjunction with a normal meeting? Or how do we want to do that?
Well, the original purpose of this was to establish the reasons and see if there's anything that we could do as a commission to keep the county together. And/or, if there isn't, to help transition it forward. And so, we've gotten quite a bit of the information that's been bugging the people out there. What we haven't done is, is got a plan to implement, a strategy and a plan to implement the presentation to the public. And I guess that's, that's where I'm at. We need, if we're going to do something, I mean, we've both met, both sides have said things. Now, we've probably got to sort the chaff and the wheat and then.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess, how long, is that something we're going to try to do in the next month? Is that something we're going to do in the next two months? I guess I, that's kind of what I was getting at.
If they're going ahead with their project, and, you know, I'm not suggesting that they shouldn't, their project, I think, would be early summer would be implemented, start to be implemented if they voted.
Okay. Well, could you, I guess I hadn't been to any of those meetings. Could you briefly explain, like, what are the main issues about it? And I mean, it might take a while, or if that's too long, we could do it another time. I guess I'm curious about, like, what the reasonings are.
What the issues were.
I know after the first meeting, we did, we went through the list of issues that were discussed at the first meeting. And obviously, roads are always a challenge. They've been a challenge for 20 years. That was probably the loudest concern, was that we have crumbling infrastructure. And second would be zoning, and there are concerns around annual feeding operations and how those are implemented into the county. There was concerns on how much we're paying lawyers in lawsuits. And so, they wanted to know how much that was. And of course, the insurance deductibles have been going up as well. And forgive me, I don't have my notes in front of me for, for all the other ones. Don, do you have some of your notes?
Yeah, this last meeting, they, you know, we got into some, what I would consider minor things, like a discussion on why Mike uses, doesn't use blades for removing snow more than trucks. Ambulance in the city was discussed versus a county. Big difference that they're interested in is the money costs from Turner County to Yankton County. There's some things that we have that have been passed on. Not, I'm not saying they aren't all justifiable, but there's some things that they, they don't think they get much dollar use of. The community center, the senior center, is one of those.
Oh, I know, I know. Several people from Jamesville and stuff will go there all the time.
Absolutely. I agree with you. They questioned some, some management things, like a number of employees that we had in the 80s versus now on different things. Brought up questions about equalization this last time, and how a farm home is valued versus the same home in a city. Now, they think it should be way, 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 way less than what, what it is. But there was a good question on, on the wheel tax. And that, that goes entirely to the county and is used by the county budget. Probably, that isn't real fair to the organized townships.
Well, it goes to the, to my, the highway.
The highway, right. That could, that, that could be maybe looked at and adjusted. There's several things, but it's just a process of talking about the differences and whether we can make it good for them and us.
I guess, you know, I would recommend, if we, if we do have any more meetings, I would really like them to be open to the public, because I know some of the feedback I've gotten from people who, they're not board members, you know, they're just average citizens, they'd like to know what's, what's going on, and they can't, because those meetings aren't open to the public. So, I guess I would ask that any future meetings on that be open to the public.
So, Don has stated that intent. So, how about we make a goal of having that within 30 days? Would that be acceptable?
You're the chairperson.
We better get it done before the guys get in the field.
Exactly.
That'll cut down the audience considerably, and that's.
Okay. Well, I will schedule, so we're all good with having a special meeting to sit down and just present some of the concerns. We'll present the numbers that we've gathered as well. Time of day that would work best, or evening?
I think maybe evening would work better for this one, because a lot of people would probably, employed that might be interested.
So, Tuesday evenings are kind of shot, because we have county commission, we have planning commission, we have drainage commission on all of those. We have city meetings on Monday evenings. Are they the second and fourth, or they're the second and fourth, because the ambulance meets the first and third? So, Monday night is out essentially through the end of March. So, Monday, Tuesdays are out. So, we have Wednesday nights church night, so we have Thursday night, Friday night, or we have a weekend meeting.
Saturday morning meeting might not be the worst.
Yeah.
Everybody should be off. I mean, I.
Bring in donuts.
You're the, you're the movie star, Joe, so.
All right. So, if each of you would email me what Saturdays do not work, and we'll figure out how many we can get, because oftentimes, we have activities for kids and stuff on Saturdays. So, I would ask that each of you text me or email me something of what won't work over the next four or five Saturdays. And I will get it set up. 10 o'clock, that's right. Okay.
Are you, are you counting this coming Saturday, too?
I think we're a little early on that for getting stuff together. Good point, Gary.
Book for that.
You've got to be three weeks out.
Yeah. So, I know we've got quite a bit of the data together already. It's just a matter of getting it organized. And I will take responsibility for that. So, that's an all here. All right. I think commissioner updates was longer than we anticipated, so there being no more, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. And I am trying to find, into executive session, litigation pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, subpart 3. If I could have a motion to go.
Move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session for litigation discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now in executive session. Perfect. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. We are now in regular session. There will be no action taken as a result of the executive session. Anything else?
For items for next meeting, I think maybe we should have at least a discussion on load limits and when, when they will come on and just, it keeps it in the public's eye. If you've got heavy things you need to haul, do it before load limits come on. We should have probably done it this meeting, but I didn't put it on there. And maybe even have Mike do some sort of announcement or put something in the paper, because two weeks is a long time. A lot could happen between now and then, so.
Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.